Okay, good morning or good afternoon, everybody. Geez, the day is already really flying. We're just gonna give a couple of minutes for everybody to come in. Well, everybody gets their cameras on. I love it when people join and they turn their cameras on. That is always makes it really easy to have these kinds of virtual meetings continuously when we can see everybody because it can get pretty lonely when I'm just seeing a list of white names on gray backgrounds. So if you feel up to it, I know that Andrew probably feels the same way. So if you feel up to it, turn on your cameras so that we can see you.
It is nice not talking to a blank screen.
Yeah, it is nice.
Then I can tell if my joke failed miserably or not.
All right, so a couple more seconds here just to let everybody get in. We've got over 100 participants joining us. We had almost 400 people register for the session today, so that's fantastic. Obviously, Andrew has a gigantic fan base and it's celebrity hour here at Royal Page Estate Services in Johnson and Daniel. You're right, everybody's here for me and not for Andrew. That's I'm sure that's correct.
Okay, you're like my fan base of one.
That is true. I am your biggest cheerleader for sure. So with that being said, I think that's an excellent introduction. Hi, everybody, to those of you that I don't know, I'm Sandra Kirkland, the manager of professional development for the Royal Page Corporate Brokerages. And I'm super excited today to be bringing you a session with Andrew Folliotto, who is the CEO and founder of a company called Just Sell Homes. And Just Sell Homes is well, I'll let Andrew talk about the company that that he runs. And I just muted him by accident because I'm a terrible person and he's talking and now I can't hear him. Okay, sorry about that. So Andrew and I have been friends for a number of years. We originally met because we were competitors way back in the day and somehow we are businesses and our careers and professions have aligned. And now I am, as we said, one of his biggest cheerleaders and really proud to be able to introduce him to all of you today where he's going to be giving you guys a live walkthrough of the Facebook Ads Manager. I can tell you from experience that it is both the easiest platform and the most difficult platform to use. So Andrew has got this really great way of being able to get people started and feeling a little bit more comfortable with experimenting and exploring with the system. So I'm going to be sitting quietly in the background. I'll keep an eye on the chat if you guys need anything, but I'm going to be totally handing the reins over to Andrew for the next hour, hour and a bit. And Andrew, take it away. Thanks very much.
Thanks for having me. It's fun, especially not being competitive, although I did enjoy when we were competitors. Those were some fun times back on the road. We did that conference circuits together. Before I jump there, if anyone has questions, fill out the chat. I'm pointing here like it might be there on your screen, but it's actually over there. Yeah, it's over there on my screen. Whichever way the chat is for you, you can put questions in there. If you do want to unmute yourself and just interrupt and ask a question, I'm okay with that, too. I'm pretty easygoing, so just jump in. So for those of you who just don't know me at all, so I was an agent, actually just let my license go like two weeks ago officially. So I'm no longer one of you technically. I mean, I haven't sold a home in six, seven years, seven, eight years, seven, I don't know, a while ago. But I started in Aurora, so if anyone here knows, a lovely bedroom community of Aurora, Ontario, not the most exciting place to live when you don't have kids, which was my situation at the time, so we left. But I built my business through blogging and Facebook ads. I mean, I tried everything, but door knocking, actually, I got a I got a deal on the second house I ever door knocked. And I'm like, this business is going to be so easy. I'm going to make it rain. That was almost the last deal I ever got door knocking. So it really didn't go how I expected. That 50% door knocking conversion rate didn't hold up. But I tried cold calling all of it, but like my first listing appointment came actually from a Facebook ad and it just kind of started going there noticing the trends. And then I started training agents how to do it, which then led to every time you train them, there's been like, can you do it for me? So I started Just Sell Homes and what we do is we just manage all your online marketing for you. And our real like our niche is really Facebook ads. So a lot of what we do is focused around managing paid Facebook and Instagram ads. So everything I'm going to walk you through today is stuff that's actively working and kind of up to date on what's working across Canada because we have clients all over and a little bit in the US, but we're mostly Canada focused. So again, if you have any questions, just jump in and ask them. I see one already came through. So do you recommend having a Facebook business page and a personal page? Or is a personal page sufficient? So you can't run ads without a business page. So yeah, you need one. There's a good argument to be made that you don't need to post that frequently to your business page and only use it for ads. But there's some things you'd want to do if that's the case. Instagram, a little bit differently, there's still a lot of good organic reach on Instagram. But definitely like if you want to grow organically your business on Facebook, you you'll need to do with your personal for the most part. Like there's still some strategies you can do on your business page organically that gets attention, but that effort to take to get that will be just as well served on your personal. But without a Facebook business page, you can't run ads at all, which is kind of exactly what we're talking about for the entire hour. So if you want to do anything that I'm talking about today, you basically need a business page for it. So let me share my screen and then we'll jump in to make sure I have three monitors that are double lights. I'm just making sure I share the right one here. All right, perfect. I think this is the right one. So yeah, so I actually gotta see if it moved the chat away for me. So I want to make sure I can monitor that while we're going. Where did they move the chat to? So Sandra, if you could just let me know, I can they covered the chat for me when I shared my screen. Oh, wait, I found it. So first I want to know is if you guys put it in the chat, how many of you have run Facebook ads and you would deem it successful? You just put a yes, it was successful or no, it wasn't. I'm just curious where everyone was. So we actually have some people putting yes, no, more than usual. That's awesome. Good bunch of no's, never tried. I've boosted posting out. Here's for those who run them, especially those who are saying no, and even those saying yes, how many of you, when you run a Facebook ad, it's just hitting boost post? Or are you going in through the Ads Manager? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so some both, a lot of people are boosting a few in the Ads Manager. So first thing I always do when I jump into this is just stop boosting posts, just just cut it out. The only advantage of boosting a post is it's quicker, but it's basically like running ads with training wheels on like you'll get there eventually. But if you go through the Ads Manager, it's like driving a car, like it's way faster, way more efficient, much better experience, but not the downside of a car with the environment stuff. So we're good. So we're going to just jump right in. I'll show you exactly why you don't have to hit boost post. So the first thing when you're in the Ads Manager, if you don't know how to get here, you just go to facebook.com/adsmanager. That will take you into your Ads Manager. If you've never set up an ad in there before, or you've never run an ad, it'll take you through a bit of a setup screen first, but outside of that, you're good to go and it'll take you into here. You just click on this. You may notice that your layout looks slightly different. They are rolling out a new kind of design and they're always testing things. Usually, all the changes are more just design focused than anything else. So like for in sort of past like four years, this create button has always been green, but sometimes it's on the right side. So don't worry about it. If it looks a little bit different, it'll work basically the same. So we'll start with create an ad here. This page, they have three different versions that are out there that we've seen right now. But the actual like options are all the same, even though they're laid out, just sometimes this is designed a little bit nicer. So don't worry again, too much of this looks a little bit different, the options are the same. So this right here is why you don't boost posts. So if you think of boosting a post, what they do is they optimize an ad for engagement. So if we take, say, 100 people on Facebook and Facebook, I'm sure you guys all know, basically knows everything about you. If you've been on there, like they have over 50,000 points of data on every single user, they know what you do on there. They know what you do on a lot of websites off of Facebook. They know what type of thing you're likely to do. For example, like if you're the type of person who will comment on an article with never having read it, they know that that's you. If you're the type of person who will go read it, then come back and comment, they know that person. If there's someone who will go read it and never comment, or they'll watch a video, or they'll become a lead for someone, they know who those people are on Facebook. So if we take 100 people and say, okay, this group engages with everything they see, this group doesn't engage with absolutely anything. If your goal is engagement, you would have to pick engagement and they're going to start showing it to these people over here. But if you pick traffic, which is sending people to your website and you they're gonna now, but you've opted it. So say you've optimized it for engagement, but you actually wanted traffic. Well, they're going to show it to these people who engage with these might be people who engage with posts without ever actually going to a website. So you have to tell Facebook exactly the actions you want people to take. So if you want someone to go to your website, you pick either traffic or conversions. I'm not going to go too deep into the conversion option today, only because it's a little bit more complicated to set up because you got to get into installing the pixel, adding in event codes. And basically, whenever I kind of teach a walkthrough like this, it kind of gets a little overwhelming. But if you do have questions about how to set up the conversions, basically what it's doing is you're telling Facebook on the thank you page, anyone who gets here is a lead and they further optimize your ads to get more people similar to those who've become leads to show up. Again, it takes a little few extra steps to set that up and I don't want to kind of go too deep into the complicated side today. For the most part, you will just use either traffic, engagement, video views, or lead gen. I'll go through the ones you the other options that you might use there, but those are the main ones. We basically never use a brand awareness as an objective. I'm not there's anything wrong with that. We just find there's better normally when your objective is actually brand awareness, there's better objectives to pick depending on what you're doing anyways. Reach basically does not optimize your ad at all. All they do when you pick reach is say, I want this to be shown to as many people as possible in this area. The difference mainly between brand awareness and reach is people understand to become aware of a brand, you have to see it multiple times. So they'll show your ads more frequently to those people to make them aware and remember it, whereas reach is more just, I want to make sure everybody in this area sees it. So we're going to do a reach campaign. We don't use reach a lot. When we use it, it's in one situation is like a retargeting ad because we already know because we're retargeting you based on like you've been on my website, that we don't have to further optimize that. We just want to make sure you see the ad after you've been on my site. The other time we want to do it is for seller appeasement. I actually just had a call with an agent this morning. Basically, they have a client who, and you guys have all had this, who's been a pain in the ass and is like, what are you doing to sell my house? I see ads for every other agent, but I don't see an ad for my house on Facebook, like what's going on? So we've basically set up an ad that targets their house so that whenever the seller now logs in, they'll see an ad for their own property. I mean, that's all it is, a seller appeasement. We're making sure they see it on their own property. It's like if you guys have ever heard the story of there's a marketing executive was like, I want billboards all over, all over the city and the budget's $3,000. Budgets where he wanted them, where he would have needed like 50. So the ad company just set up the billboards along his commute commute to work. So for him, it looked like they were everywhere because everywhere he went in the city, the billboards were. They just weren't anywhere else in the city. It's the same idea when you're doing a reach ad. If you want to specifically reach people in a certain area, just to make sure they see it, that's one of the few times we use reach as an option. If we're sending someone to our website, we pick traffic. Pretty straightforward. If you want them to read a blog, go to your landing page that you have, don't send them to your land landing page, we'll talk about, or don't send them to your homepage and I'll talk about that later when we're actually building an ad. If you want people to engage, which means a like, a comment, a share. If it's a photo album to like scroll through the photos, you pick engagement. You don't have to worry about app installs. You can also ignore catalog sales and store traffic. Video views is pretty self-explanatory. You have a video, you want people to watch it. But what a lot of people do, and this is where you have to really think about what your goal is, is they do video views, but what they actually want is them people who watch the video to click on the link and go to their website and like check out that listing on their website. If that's your goal, then you would actually pick traffic and do a traffic ad with a video. Because again, like Facebook knows who's likely to watch a video and then click on a link versus just watch the video. And if you tell them, I just want people to watch a video, they're going to show it to people who would watch it, but not necessarily click on the link. So again, just because you have a video doesn't mean you have to select video views. Pick the one you're likely to want. Lead generation is great. So if you want cheap leads, this is by far the easiest way to do it. If you're familiar with Facebook lead ads, especially for listings, right now we're averaging about $1 to $3 a lead off of Facebook lead ads off for a listing. Pre-COVID, where it's more like $1 to $5 on average, but that cost dropped kind of since March. So we expect it to eventually go back up to that $1 to $5 range. And then there's some other changes coming that might bump that up again. But lead gen, what it does, you click on the ad, a form pops up on Facebook and it's pre-filled in with the contact information they gave to their Facebook account. So the email address and their phone number that they have attached to their Facebook account, Facebook pre-fills in, all they have to do is hit submit. The nice side of that, you get a lot of cheap leads. The downside is a lot of people treat it like Apple's terms and conditions. They don't even realize they're hitting submit and they just click on submit. And then when you call them, they're like, I didn't opt into anything. Who are you? What are you talking about? If you're good at dealing with that as an objection, keep it like that. If you don't want to deal with that, you can take some steps in the settings to make them like acknowledge an extra step that they're sending you their information. But every time you add something like that, it's going to decrease the volume of leads. So we normally start by going for volume for most people and then slowly adding in filters to find that right balance between quantity and quality. So it's go, where do those leads end up? Facebook inbox, email. So this is kind of the pain in the butt with Facebook lead ads. They don't go anywhere. They just sit in the back end of your Facebook page and you, if you don't do anything, have to manually go into the back end of your Facebook page and go download a CSV file of all your recent leads. Lately, Facebook has started notifying you that there's new leads, both through email and a notification, but they still don't give you the lead details. You still have to go back in your Facebook page. What we do is we use tools like Zapier, Zapier, however you want to call it. And it actually just sits there for you, takes the lead out and submits it into any CRM you want. So like RLP Sphere, for example, you could actually set it up with a tool like Zapier to specifically send the leads into your CRM. You just want to look at basically what is your CRM integrate? A lot of CRMs have direct integrations now with Facebook where it can send the leads right into your CRM. If you just want them emailed to you, then Zapier is usually the best one. But depending on what CRM you use, you kind of have to look at what tools integrate, what ones don't. But normally between Zapier and there's another one called Leads Bridge, they generally will connect with both. Do you still use Leads Bridge? We don't. It's not because there's anything against Leads Bridge, it's just we were using Zapier for a lot of other things that Leads Bridge couldn't do that weren't related to lead ads. And since we kind of hit a account level with Zapier, avoid the amount we were spending that it did everything we would have needed from Leads Bridge, so we didn't want to pay for both anymore. If you're just using it for this feature of grabbing your lead ads and bringing them in, then you can stick with Leads Bridge. Leads Bridge is a little bit easier than Zapier to set up and run. So if you're happy with it, do it. The only reason we switched off Leads Bridge and entirely to zap, to doing zaps, is exactly what I said of like, we used it for a lot more. So for instance, internally as a team, we use Slack to communicate and a lot of things happen automatically in Slack to alert our team in different channels based on activity people are taking. So like if you ever buy anything from us, it sends out an alert in our, one of our channels to let people know there's a sale and that they have to jump in and help that person. That's something that Leads Bridge can do. So we switched over to zap, so we didn't have to pay for both. But yeah, Leads Bridge is great. We just, we outgrew it as our team. I think for most agents, it's fine. Again, lead gens are great, but lead quality, it's generally going to be closer to a like cold call than it would be to like a referral. But you can add in custom questions to like increase quality. Anytime you want to increase the quality of the leads to oversimplify online marketing, just put more barriers in the way of them becoming a lead. So the more hoops they have to jump through, the higher quality that lead will be. I mean, it's a slight oversimplification, but it's true. So every time you're like, you know, I don't like the qualities leads, I want to get better quality leads, add a step between them becoming a lead and getting to you. And just every time you add one more question, one more step, the higher that quality lead is, but the much lower quality you will get. We find most agents end up preferring the quantity and then sorting through it on their end, then going to like the higher quality one. Almost everyone says at the beginning they want quality and almost all end up actually going for quantity. And then the last one here, messages. Basically, all that does is they click on the ad and opens up Facebook Messenger between them and your business page and you can chat with them right there. Generally speaking, lead gen and messages, you're going to get about the same cost per lead, but lead gen, you get their email and phone number, so we prefer that. Because with messages, you now have to then take that conversation and get their phone number, get their email. And then the other downside is like, say, if you're kicked out of Facebook, you've now lost access to messaging those people. So we like to get them their information where we can contact them outside of Facebook because you never know what might happen. Like I know an agent who had a last name that it was Price, it was years ago. She got kicked off for a bit because they didn't believe that was her real name because they thought Price was like one of those things where agents like put in. So it'd be like if you put in Sandra and your name was like Sandra Royal Page, they thought it was that type of thing. So they kicked her off for a month while she like had to like mail them a copy of her ID and go through this whole process. But then she lost access to all those people that she'd been messaging with and deals she was working on. So you do have to take it off there. Ideally, if you're good at messages, you're better at converting. Sure, you can go for it, but for us, we almost never pick messages. We almost always go lead gen because we want their name, email and phone number specifically. It's just way more effective that way. And then we'll just pick lead gen for this example because I think that's what most people want is more leads. Here, these names, they're only seen by you, so don't worry too much about naming it. I just normally, especially on this part, is make it something that is easy to tell. So if we did like homes under 800,000 or something, there's a lot of different types of campaigns. I'm going to show you this one specifically. If it's a listing, we know we just put the listing name. Continue here. I'll show you a few different things. So one special ad category, sadly, this is coming to Canada. So before, it was only for people in the US and you had to select this. So right now, if you're running an ad for a listing, you have to select this. It hasn't rolled out to every account in Canada, but by December, they said every ad account in Canada will have to use this or they'll get disapproved. And you will do some ads that aren't specific to listings and you will get caught up in this. You might have to appeal a couple of times if you're doing like a home eval, but it is specific for listings. So if you're running an ad for homes for sale, whether it's a general list of homes or a house, you have to select this. What that does, it basically gets rid of your ability to target to a degree. So you'll be minimum a 15 mile radius. You can't target, you have to, you can't change the age from everyone over the age of 18 can see your ad. You can't exclude agents from seeing your ad anymore and you could, there's only a few inclusions you're allowed. I mean, it's definitely annoying and a bit of a pain in the butt. I would say for those of you in like downtown Toronto and downtown Vancouver, it's a pain because a 15 mile radius from the downtown cores is a lot of people. If you're outside of those areas, normally 15 miles isn't a big deal. So don't worry about it too much. But then like when you're downtown in a city, it's, it is definitely a little bit annoying. So it's just one of those things you kind of have to accept that is happening and deal with it. Outside of big cities, you haven't found it changes results that much. But just so some context, so you know why they brought it in. It started because a landlord in Oakland got caught. He was running ads for tenants for his rental building and he specifically excluded all black people from seeing his ad. So he got caught doing that and obviously they got in a lot of trouble. Facebook said they took some steps, which is back when you might have seen like you had to certify you were following local regulations, but then you could do anything you wanted. Well, after they did that, people kept doing that and then discriminating anyways, got caught again. Facebook got fined like almost a billion dollars, I believe, for allowing housing discrimination. So because of that, they brought in this. So if you are running a listing ad, you do have to select that. But you might not have to until December. So until December, I would keep trying not to use it because your ads will be more effective without it. The only kind of, there is a kind of a way around it to a degree, which is when you select it, you're still allowed to run an ad to a retargeting audience. And when you build that retargeting audience, you can target that to anybody. So what we've seen some people in the US do is they'll like run an ad to a neighborhood about like, you know, here's everything you need to know about the specific neighborhood like pricing, like what's going on with sold markets, what's going on with listings? And they only run that ad in that one area they're targeting. Then they run a listing ad to people who watched that video. And the only people watching that video are people in that specific smaller area they wanted. So there are some ways you can kind of get around it. But I'm guessing, to be honest, they'll eventually close that loophole because they also used to allow lookalike audiences in them and then they got rid of that, too. But we'll talk more about that a little bit. So when you're targeting your ad, oh, before we get to targeting, campaign budget optimization, more of an advanced thing, I would say for the most part, don't worry about it. This only really matters if for the same campaign, you're going to run it to multiple audiences. So if you're going to run a campaign to say like, hey, I want this listing ad to go to people in this area, I want them to go to people who've been on my website, I also want it to go to people in my database and you want those to be separate, then it makes sense to come into campaign budget optimization. But we can talk about that another time because that's kind of again, gets a little bit more to like the advanced strategy stuff. So we'll come in here. On this right side, I would say ignore this for the most part. This is semi-accurate if you get into like e-commerce type of ads. We found for low, any local service businesses, especially like real estate, it's not that accurate. So like they'll say three to 15 leads and you'll get one or none, or it'll be like, you'll get no leads and we'll get 10. Like this never seems accurate. The number here to pay attention to is this one. So as you're narrowing your audience down, it's going to tell you how many people you're potentially targeting. And you still do, it does get a little glitchy sometimes. So you still have to have a bit of that critical mind to it of, does this make sense? So as an example, we work with a lot of people like in brokerages who target agents or teams trying to recruit agents. And if you go by job titles and just pick like every job title agents might have, it only shows 24,000 agents in all of Canada, when in reality, there's like 110 type of things. So if you know that there's actually 110, you know, the 24,000 thing, it's wrong. So once in a while, you might add an inclusion or an exclusion that just changes the number to a weird way. But you'll be surprised at how little targeting we actually do for most of our ads. So when we're coming down here, this is the interest section location. There's a lot you can do here. So to start, you go postal code. So the first three digits of a postal code. So for example, I could just do that. It really depends where you live, if this matters or not. For example, the town of Aurora where I grew up, it's the entire town is one postal code. So you can also just type in Aurora and then get it that way. It'll default to this 25 mile radius. You can drop that to a 10 mile or you just come in and say current city only and it'll just do the thing. And that'll be the exact same as that L4G. Now, if we were in like the city, that's where this type of thing becomes more valuable because you can now start just picking those very specific ones, especially if it's tied at all to like postal campaigns you're doing that are then tied to something like this. You can make it a little bit more effective that way. You can also just type in addresses. I don't know why I have caps lock on. It's not trying to.
Can you type more than one?
Yes, you can put in as many and I'll show you a few of those. So like, for example, if anyone here does military relocation, you can actually go and drop a pin on every single military base in Canada. So we do this for a client who works in Borden. Basically, every during posting season, every military base in Canada has an ad. So if you step foot on the base, you'll see an ad be like, have you been posted to CFP Borden? We'll help you out. So it can be a pretty effective way to do that. You can literally just come in if you want, click drop pin here and go drop it anywhere you want. You can literally, if you like I mentioned, if you want to do it all over, you just start You can literally, if you, like I mentioned, if you want to do it all over, you just start dropping them basically anywhere you want. It works. It's not perfect when you're doing it that way because you gotta kind of zoom in onto the map, obviously, and pick the right spot. If you do new development, sometimes their addresses don't, just don't show up here yet. So then when you're doing it, it gets kind of a pain. But one cool thing I really want to show you guys. Let's go. Alright, so take this one. Say hypothetically, I wanted to target this building. Drop it to a one mile radius. A lot of people will be like, well, it's only one mile. I want to go tighter. And I just want to target people in that building. Well, drop a pin just outside here. And then we narrow that down to one mile. And then we exclude it. And then we drop another pin up on top here. Basically, have to drop four extra pins. It can be a little finicky in some areas, but normally most areas, just four pins will do it. Sometimes you gotta like move them a little bit, but I'll show you what happens here. So now, when I do it this way, only people in this area will see the ad. So all of a sudden, we went from, we were targeting all of this to now people here. Where this is really useful is like, if you have a listing presentation coming up, I'll target the house with client testimonial videos for the few days leading up to your listing presentation. So all they see on Facebook, whenever they log in, is people talking about how great you are. Doing things like that, leaving you know where people will be. I mean, obviously during COVID, it screws up a few of the other options. Like we, we used to do is like, if you're going to like a school fair and you're there with your kids, target the school fair with ads and your face on it so that people going through the fair, if they happen to pull up their phone during, so like on social and they see your ad to be like, wait, that's her over there. And then they might go and talk to you. So I used to coach basketball and I didn't have kids at the time, but I didn't want to be that like annoying guy coaching who's like, hey, I'm helping your kids. By the way, have you thought about buying or selling real estate? I just thought it'd be really tacky. So what I did is I targeted the gym where I coached on game days. And I ran ads that had me and then the giant logo. So like for you, it'd be like the Royal Page logo, super recognizable. They instantly know you're in real estate, giant face. And I just started getting parents coming up to me after games being like, you know, funny thing, funny coincidence, I just saw on Facebook that you're a real estate agent. I bet that is a funny coincidence. Let's, let's chat and picked up some business that way of knowing where I'll be and where people will be and I can target it. Can you repeat the exclusion for narrowing? So all you have to do is grab a pin, put it right outside the original circle. And then drop it to one mile and then hit exclude. The only kind of annoying thing here, to be honest, is I can't just like pick this up and move it. I have to say delete this one. And then do it again. So like I have to take it out. So I felt it wasn't like close enough and then redo it. Sometimes what happens when you do this is it makes it too small. I'll get into the age gender right after this. So you can see here, this little area is always being targeted. And it's showing ninety eight hundred people. The reason for this is if you see up here, we've selected people living in or recently in this location. The recently in is why? Because all it takes, this is Young Street right here, there's a lot of people who drive on that. And if you drive through the phone that's connected to Facebook, you've recently been in this little stretch, you can be targeted with that ad. So if you wanted to get over that, you would switch to people who live here. The downside of doing this in a small area is sometimes you go below the minimum audience level. And they say, hey, two, there's just too few people, you may not be able to show your ad. So basically, in that case, you do switch to people recently in. Ninety eight hundred people from a Facebook perspective is quite small still. So it's pretty cheap. And there's still a few things we'll do. So we'll get into here, age. Normally what we do, what, except listings, when we're not allowed with a special category ads, is we look at if it's a buyer ad. We'll go like, what age do people start buying? Generally in our area, we go minus two. So if we start like people start buying at twenty seven, we'll start the ads at twenty five often. And then if we say, okay, they start buying at twenty seven, a seller ad, we'd actually go plus two around twenty nine. So for your area, you roughly know what those numbers would be. And then on the top end, this is more just like the type of clients you're looking for. So like, for instance, when I sold, I was specializing in like first time buyers, first time sellers. So I would normally do like twenty seven, twenty five, but then I cap it at like fifty. And now we've already dropped it down to just fifty two hundred people. That's actually from a Facebook perspective, really, really cheap to deal with. So, but age is more just the type of clients you want. Like, does your campaign relevant to that person? So if we're doing a ad for get your, you know, free home evaluation, do you want to go sixty five plus? I mean, that's the, one of the downsides here is you can't go like further specific when they get older. Because I know like generally, once they hit a certain age, it's often like their children who are kind of in charge of the home sale. But again, depends on your clientele. We'll just, normally, we just look more at the bottom age unless it's a specific campaign. That wouldn't make sense above a certain age, but for the most part, we just do like in that twenty seven to thirty one range, depending on where you're doing it and target from there. In terms of genders, we leave it on all usually. What we found, you'll probably about sixty percent of your leads will be women when you leave it on all. But they'll be about the same cost per lead from women to men. So the only time we would generally say run ads to one over the other is if that's your niche. Like, we used to, when I sold real estate, a woman in my office only worked with divorced women over forty. That was her niche. So for her, obviously, she would pick women here. But outside of something like that, where that's your niche, you're like, you've noticed, hey, I'm really good at converting one gender, but not the other. Then you just pick that one and go that way. But for the most part, again, ninety nine percent of the time, we don't even touch gender. And the, kind of the other thing we say with Facebook ads, we actually do very little interest targeting. I think it's one of those things that people jump in here and they try to do all these fancy things and you don't need to. Ninety plus percent of our ads, it's age, location, and then might exclude agents. Majority of the time, that's all you need. Generally, because we're doing like local audiences, the audience to, from a Facebook perspective are so much smaller that you just don't need them to be any further refined. And the more you refine them, the more you limit your ability for Facebook to optimize your ads to get in front of the right people. How do you exclude or how, what, would we get into the part for lead distribution? I'm not really in this one. You can get leads right into your RLP sphere CRM. Using Zapier is the easiest way. We've done it so far. I haven't had a chance to see if they have a direct integration, but you can with Zapier. How do you exclude agents by job title? No. Job title turns out is actually a really terrible way to exclude agents. So as like an exercise, go look at ten agents you know on Facebook and go look at their job titles. You're going to see a different job title for every one. There's like Realtor, sales rep, broker, CEO, team leader, dream maker. Like, there's a million different things that agents call themselves. And like I was saying before, like if you go by job title, it only shows there's twenty four thousand agents in all of Canada. And that's well over that. You also can't do it by brokerage because even though you're all Royal Page, I bet the majority of you don't list like Royal Page Canada or your brokerage as your employer. The majority of you probably actually list your business page as your employer. And you can exclude by individual agents' business pages. So whether we're including or excluding a group, the way we do it is we call it the three Fs. And we look at, it's very interest based. Because like a general interest like real estate, it's not a great one because a lot of people interested in real estate are like you guys and mortgage brokers. So if you're trying to target people who are interested in real estate, like potentially buy, you're just targeting a lot of agents. But if you exclude people, we look at like, what would be an interest that they would have that nobody else would? So the first F we look at is follow. Who do you, who do agents follow that nobody else would? So a really example of this would be like Tom Ferry, Mike Ferry, Brian Buffini. Gary Keller is also as a exclusion option on here. Because people who follow them are only generally real estate agents. Like if Tom Ferry walks into a real estate conference, people get excited. They want to hear from him and most people in the room will know who he is. Tom Ferry then leaves that building, walks it onto the street and starts walking around. It might be hours until someone even recognizes them. And it's probably someone who left the conference and just happened to bump into him because they went in the same direction. So you're looking for those people who are like what's called famous to the family. So say you want to target golfers, you can't pick Tiger Woods to target golfers because he's too big. Too many people would have an interest in Tiger Woods. Like, and read an article about him, whether it's, whether they like golf or not. But if you were a golfer and you targeted Dustin Johnson or Bubba Watson or Jordan Spieth, I might just screw up one of those names. Those guys are, you only know them if you're into golf. So that's your target. So with agents, we'll look at like, alright, let's get Tom Ferry. You'll notice sometimes when you pick Tom Ferry, two Tom Ferry shows up. Right now, neither, sometimes just gets finicky and doesn't show up any. Facebook's annoying sometimes like that. But sometimes when you type in Tom Ferry, two Tom Ferry shows up. Turns out there's a female Tom Ferry, who's a musician. And they have about the same size of audience. So we don't actually always know which Tom Ferry we're picking. So yeah, you can see here, here's a Tom Ferry with three hundred and ninety four people who follow them somehow or interest. And here's one with two eighty nine. We don't know which one of these two is Tom Ferry, the real estate coach, or Tom Ferry, the musician. So we normally, just to be safe, exclude them both. So unless you're a big Tom Ferry, the musician fan, don't worry about it too much. I don't think that big around here, but you can see like we've already now dropped this down again quite a bit. And then, so that's who do they follow? Oh, the other one I mentioned was Gary Keller. And not every like person is going to be big enough to be found here. So for example, even though like Phil Soper is a big name in Canadian real estate, it's not that like Phil has his own business page that has hundreds of thousands of fans on it. So he's not going to show up as someone you can exclude that people might follow. The second F is frequent. So where are they spending their time? So we look at it from like, okay, are they going on to Architectural Digest or ESPN dot com or Vanity Fair or TMZ or something like that? For real estate agents, the easy one would be something like Inman News. Because generally, it's only people within the industry who would ever go onto that page. So you just select Inman News. And do that. We'll also look at the last F being fund. So where are people, in this case, agents, spending their money? So we'd look at something like Dot Loop. That's an agent specific program. But what you can't do is pick DocuSign. Because DocuSign is used by a lot of people outside of real estate too. So if you use DocuSign, you're going to exclude a lot of business professionals who use that in a non-real estate career. So again, it has to be very specific to that group that you're targeting. So we'll do things like that. Real Estate Webmasters in another one. Can we pick Tread? Yes, I would generally caution against Tread and Kria because they both run a number of ads to consumers as well. So like Kria runs a lot of ads to look at Realtor dot C A. And then Tread also, they have, I can't remember the name of it now, I'm blanking on the name, but they have like a consumer focused one that they run ads to as well. So it's not perfect to target them. And same with like Aria sometimes. So but if you're in Ontario area, real estate college, if someone lists that as their school, you know, they're an agent. And you can do things like that. What you could do is the regulatory body. So I don't remember what it's called in BC, or if it's big enough to target it, but like Rico in Ontario. There is no way anyone but an agent is going on and liking Rico on here. So you can be pretty confident if you exclude people who like Rico, you're excluding basically everyone you need to. So adding all these interests in, and then if you really want, you can come in, sometimes suggestions, it's annoying. Again, Facebook gets a little finicky. Normally, you can click on suggestions, it'll show you more. So for exclusions, that's how you do it. Now, on the inclusion side, you actually get a few extra options. So we don't do a lot here. When we do, we do it more demographic based than interest based. So we don't do like real estate, but we'll do like married. And then sometimes we'll click on narrow and be like, alright, we want married people who are also parents. So the way that this would work is they have to be married and they have to be parents and they can't be an agent to see this ad. If I instead didn't click narrow and put parents up here, that's now going to say, it's going to go to everyone who's a parent and everyone who's married, not people who are married and parents. So if you want them to be both things, you come here. If for some reason you're like, you run a team and you want to recruit agents to your team, you actually have an advantage over the exclusions. You could put all this up here. And then in here, add in business page admin or Facebook page admin. Because most agents are admin of a Facebook page. So by adding that in, now we know we're targeting Facebook page admins. And then we would have put like all these other ones up there. And now you'd be able to specifically target agents who run their own Facebook page. The reason you'll see one of the options is business page admin. But that's not always effective, only because a lot of agents will also like deem their page a community page instead of a business page necessarily. But Facebook page admin just lumps them all in. So it works pretty well. Does it make sense to include RLP Remax and then exclude by Buffini? So it can work. When we run tests, generally, doing those, it hasn't changed the results too much. Unless you're able to do it as like a retargeting thing. But when, like, we have tested that of like, what if we ran an ad to people interested in real estate, but then exclude the agent interests? It hasn't changed the results enough, but it has limited the audience more that hasn't really been worth it. But we, we had that idea too, and we tried it and it just didn't impact us. We found it's just more effective. Leave this as blank as possible and then just add in maybe like married parents. Now, one downside, if you're going to go by like relationship status, is it doesn't, it's not, people don't always list it. So for example, I don't always have it listed that I'm married because my wife's a federal parole officer and we don't want, and I profile's pretty public. We don't want people to go to my profile and then find the connection to my wife and then have her parolees Facebook stalking and messaging her on there. So you, basically, if you excluded married people or included married people, you wouldn't add me in there. So sometimes what's more effective is just to exclude single people. If that was say your goal, if you wanted to target people like engaged, married, that type of thing. And in relationships, just exclude single people. And you have a better chance of getting in front of them that way. But it's a little bit of playing, but for the most part, again, like we don't do a lot outside of age, location and exclude agents. That's ninety plus percent of our ads are just that. I'd say the remaining like eight, other remaining eight percent is retargeting and lookalike audiences. And like maybe two percent of our ads, do we get into like the really detailed targeting stuff? So again, you're just going. Can you exclude a specific person, Facebook user? Yes and no. You can't be like, hey, here's Sandra Kirkland. I don't want Sandra to ever see one of my ads again. It's not that simple. What you can do is exclude custom audiences and you could upload a list of people. I believe it needs to have at least a hundred people for you to be able to use that audience. So if you say uploaded two hundred and it matched a hundred and twenty of them, you could then exclude them from seeing it. And you just make sure that one person you don't want to see your ad is included in that list of people you're including. You used to be able to exclude one person. So there, the way it used to work is you could upload like a hundred email addresses. And what I, I actually used to do this to mess with my buddy. We would run it to, we'd upload a list of ninety nine women and their email address and then one guy. And when I'd run the ad, I'd run it to males only. And he'd be the only one to see the ad. And then I'd show him an ad that said that Donovan McNabb was horribly injured in a car crash and that he wasn't going to play the rest of the season and his career was over in football. And then I'd send him a trade for Donovan McNabb in fantasy football. Worked really well to try and get some trades through my way, but Facebook shut that down. Basically, all those things to like get really, really hyper targeted like that. A lot of it was because of the twenty sixteen election and a lot of the stuff that people were doing to target people excessively through that. They got rid of a lot of those options. This is a ton of information. Are you running this again soon? No, well, we're always end up running these fairly regularly. But the changer is recording this and we'll send out the recording after. We also, like, they're not as up to date, but once a year, I basically do this on my YouTube channel and put it up there. So if you have the Just Sell Homes YouTube channel, there's other videos of me doing walkthroughs like this. So you can definitely get more. And then here, we normally don't pick this. So this one, detailed targeting expansion. Basically, all this is, is they're saying, hey, we're going to, please give us the ability to keep like excluding or like take out some of the interests and targeting that you picked. If we think we can get you a lower cost per lead. If all you've done is age, location and exclude agents, if you check this, basically, all you're doing is telling them, okay, you can show it to agents now. If now, on the other hand, you're going in here and loading up on these targetings, then we generally say pick this and let Facebook play with it a little bit. But if you're just doing like age, location and exclude agents, we wouldn't check it. I'm not going to go too deep in placements. I want to make sure we get through actually building an ad first. Also about placements, most of the time, you're okay doing manual placements. The only thing we normally often do, lead gen, it limits you to Facebook and Instagram. If you're doing a non-lead generation objective, turn off audience network most of the time because it's garbage. Which is not a lot of great stuff out there. Normally, when you do automatic placements, though, they're not going to show it a ton to audience network just because those aren't the results you're going to want anyway. Stuff out there. Normally, when you do automatic placements, though, they're not going to show it a ton to audience network just because those aren't the results you're going to want anyways. So you can, you'll be fine for the most part leaving on automatic placements. The only time we say definitely don't is if you're advertising a video that's under one minute. Because they'll make it a rewarded video in apps. Which a lot of people will see it. But they won't actually make it work. Yes, there'll be a recording. I believe Sandra will send it out. How often do you find you have to rework your methods based on changes implemented by Facebook? Surprisingly, not that often. If you, and this goes with Google too, if you understand what Facebook and Google's goal is. And. Try to align yourself with it. Any changes to algorithms won't have a big impact on you. Because almost every single change to algorithms that affect people, what they're actually trying to do with that. Is penalize people who have found loopholes in the current system. So if you look at Instagram, where they switched from the chronological feed to the algorithm feed. The reason they did that is businesses realized. They didn't need to put effort into creating good content. They could just post the same content every fifteen minutes and it would make sure it would always show up at the top of your feed. So it was like, it was a cheap way to game the system. There's also another one where people realized if at least five people comment within two minutes of you posting. It'll boost your exposure significantly. So people started creating what's called an engagement pod. Where if one person in the group posted, they'd all jump over and comment right away to help get it more exposure. Well, Facebook and Instagram, their algorithms are smarter than you. They figured out that people do that. Now you get penalized. So Facebook and Google basically have the same goal with slight change. Facebook, their goal is to keep you on the platform as long as possible and for you to enjoy that experience. So if you say, what I'm doing, would this keep someone on Facebook? And would they think that this is has any level of value to their life? Then most algorithm changes might impact you minimally, but generally don't have a huge impact. Same with like Google. Google's only goal is to serve the best answer possible to whatever someone searched on Google. So if you're trying to like game the system, like in the early days, it was keyword focus. So you hear a lot about keywords. So it'd be something like, hey, if I just write Homes for Sale Milton a million times on the page. Then I'm going to be the top result for Homes for Sale Milton. So what some people started doing is they'd write it on every two inches on the page. On a white background and then they change the font of the text to white. So someone coming to the page wouldn't see Homes for Sale Milton written a million times, but Google would. Because their spider would crawl that text. And then they start ranking high. So the change Google made was to get rid of people gaming the system. So as long as you're not like trying these tactics, these little like hacks. That are meant to like get you around an algorithm or like a trick to manipulate it somehow. Most of these change won't impact you. The people who see the biggest changes. Are people who basically try to get around and like find a loophole in the algorithm. So if you don't focus too much on that, you just focus on provide good content that people will enjoy and helps them. You will generally find most changes have little to no impact on you. So next, we'll just want to build that because I know we only got a few minutes left. So if you build an ad. We'll just come down here. So. You see, here's the ad preview. Most important is an image. So we'll just pull it in. I'm going to pull one from stock photos. I generally recommend, don't use stock photos because people can see that you want something that stands out. The more organic it looks usually the better. Why is it asking multiple times to enter the ad name? Because well, depends where you're looking at it. So here it's multiple different sections. So they're asking for the campaign name, the ad set name and the ad name. Those are three distinct things. If you're only doing like one ad, one ad set. Campaign, then it doesn't really matter how you name it. When you get into like advanced level running of ads with multiple versions, split testing and getting into that stuff. You need a naming convention. But if you're not getting into that stuff, it doesn't actually matter that much. So how, so we often see a picture of a house. There is one stock photo of a house that outperforms all other stock photos and it's this one. If you're going to use this image, please make sure it looks like it could actually be in the area that you're working in. But here we'll go. So images, the goal has one goal and has to get people to stop and look at your ad. People are scrolling and I believe the number is about three hundred feet a day with their thumb, like going on the phone, just doing this. About three hundred feet a day. So you have to have an image that gets them to stop. So normally like a really nice house can do it. If it's a just sold, instead of doing like fancy sold graphics, you'll do better having like the seller in front of the sold sign with the sold writer. If your sellers don't want to have a photo taken, do it with you holding the side or sold writer. Because what happens is people are scrolling through, they stop to look to see if it's someone they know. So the only goal of your image is to get people to stop the scroll and get them to look at what you wrote in your ad. That's, so that's all you're doing here. All you're doing is selling. The stop. Now they're going to go to your text and that text, their job is to get them to take the action that you want them to take. So your image doesn't have to like show the offer as much. It just has to get them to stop. Some people take that to the extreme. It can work. There's a running joke in the early years of Facebook ads of the gray shirt girl because there was this one. Reasonably attractive woman in a gray shirt that for some reason her photo outperformed every other image anyone ever used. So every big marketer started using this specific one. So she was the gray shirt girl. How do you upload a video? It's same here. When you come into here, I just click change image and click upload. And I would upload a video that way. So you can do it basically the exact same way. You're just selecting a video instead of an image. So here, when you think about like they stopped the scroll. Then you write the headline. The way that we do the headline, which is what shows up underneath here is we just tell them what they're getting. So if it was like a list of homes under eight hundred thousand. To be, yeah, that's what we're going to do. It would be like. Free report. List of homes in Toronto under eight hundred thousand. So this type of ad, by the way, if you don't have listings, is the cheapest way to get leads usually. There's two different ways we go about this type of ad usually. Option one is we go by price. So we look at what's the type of home people want? What's a price point where? There's always a home available, but it's hard to find. So if it was like an actual Toronto ad, it'd be more like. Move in ready homes under a million in Toronto. That's pretty hard to find. But you can find it. But it's not easy. The other option, if you don't want to go by price, because one downside of running it by price is a lot of the leads that come through. Actually end up being people who. Aren't really that interested, to be honest, like they can't afford it. So like, yeah, they want a list of homes under eight hundred thousand in Toronto, but they actually are hoping for a home at two hundred thousand. So instead, what we'll do for some people is we'll say like list of homes in Toronto between. You know. Seven hundred and eight hundred. Or we go by type of home. So maybe we do. List of bungalows in Toronto or list of Victorian properties in Toronto or something like that. But we go by home types. Like we have a client who works up in Sudbury. And we were getting a ton of leads under a dollar for them because what everyone wanted up there and the language they were using in Sudbury was they want homes with acreage. So we just offered a list of homes with acreage and then the photo was like an aerial shot of a home with a lot of land. That everybody wanted, so it worked well. This is actually right now, the most effective way to actually target sellers. Is target the type of home people would move up to or move down to. But you don't target like entry level because seller cost really right now is really high. So if you do something like, so for example, if we did like list of bungalows in Toronto, that'd be more of a downsizing focused ad. But you would get hopefully through your conversion and your conversations, get them. Why is free report in brackets? I wish I had a fancy reason outside of I've tested a lot of different ways and square brackets seem to work. I've tested it with round brackets and no brackets and just putting like what they're getting seems to work better. So we do what they're getting in square brackets. Don't try around. We've tried it. Doesn't work as well. And then we put like the actual specifics of it. So like if it was a home for sale, we might put home for sale in the square brackets and then the list of bungalows instead, we would write like the address. Or but like a little description of it, but. I can't honestly tell you what it is about square brackets that seem to work better just through our testing. I wish I had a better answer for you than we've just tried it a bunch of times and that seems to work better. So now up here in the text, so the interesting thing with text is this is actually just as important to your targeting. So like when we do seller ads, like say you're doing a what's my home worth campaign. You can't target by people thinking of selling. But you can use language here to target them. So instead of saying like, what's my homework or do you want to find out what your home is worth? Say, are you thinking of selling your home? The first step is finding out what it's worth. Because now people who read that first question of. Are you thinking of selling your home? If they say yes and keep reading, that's the people you want. If you, they say, no, I'm not thinking of selling my home, they're more likely to just ignore the ad and keep going. So you're now using your language to target those ideal people. So if something like this, though, we keep it pretty sure strict. So if we're doing big logos, be like. Are you looking for a bungalow in Toronto? And then well, here it depends on how you have it set up. After that, you should kind of tell them exactly what they're getting. So maybe it's like, you know. Get a free list of bungalows for sale in Toronto delivered right to your inbox. Click learn more below to get the list. And we change the button to learn more. The reason we use learn more is only because it more people click learn more than any other buttons. So we normally stick with that. So this is a very simple ad that can work. You can add emoji in if you want. Generally speaking, emoji is more related to like. Does it fit with your brand? So like if you're doing this, we might pop in and say, okay, let's add this in. And let's add in like a house there and maybe like a for sale tag. People try our sale or. Yeah, like this one, like people try a bunch of different things here. It can fit your brand. Like sometimes you might do some that like. Gets more attention, do something like that. It's more about like, does it fit your brand? Like we had a client, we sold a house for them using the poop emoji. But the poop emoji really doesn't work with everyone's branding that they're going to use. Hashtags on Facebook are irrelevant. Don't worry about them in your ads ever. Emojis can work. We find kind of like one to four. But if it doesn't fit your brand and your style. You don't have to worry about it. It's not going to have such a huge impact that it's a big deal. The only thing I'll say, if you're going to use emoji, just please know what they mean. Not every emoji is what you think it is. Like eggplant, I would just generally avoid that at all costs. There is one agent I know who does use an eggplant as marketing, but he knows exactly what he's doing. But so generally avoid the eggplant, the peach, the taco. And then, you know, figure it out from there. If you don't know what one means and you want to use it, ask someone first or Google it. Urban dictionary dot com can be your friend if you're not sure what slang and people are using it. Basically, you can type in slang and it'll tell you what that means. But there's, don't use emoji unless you know what the context is behind it. You can get in trouble that way sometimes, but generally as long as you avoid the eggplant, you're mostly okay. Some of the other ones are more like context driven. You don't worry, have to worry about description too much. It would show up here. It's more on desktop only. We often will just honestly leave it blank. Display link, same thing. We often just leave that blank because it's not a big deal. This used to be a bigger deal. So back in the day before Facebook cracked down on it. If I was sending them to like just sellhomes.com. I could add now that would show up here like just sellhomes.com slash homie val. I could come in here to display link and be like ESPN dot com. And it would look to people like, hey, this is actually going to ESPN dot com. This is how like Russians ran disinformation campaigns. Is they would do like something truly horrible about Hillary Clinton and then say, oh, this comes from CNN dot com. See? It's legitimate and they'd run like Hillary Clinton murders babies or something crazy. Like this is how they did it. A lot of those campaigns and because of that. Facebook came in and said, all right, you can't run it. So if I tried to hit publish now, it would not allow me to run that because that's not a link I'm sending anyone to. So it has to be the URL of the one you're sending them to. So the only real time you might want to use it now. Is like if your URL for your website was like yourname.com slash listing slash Toronto slash bungalow slash one, two, three, Main Street. And you wanted to show instead yourname.com slash one, two, three, Main Street, you could do that. But again, like. I don't think it's relevant for all of us to even bother. So I said, just leave a blank. Don't worry about it. It'll potentially just cause you more headaches because of disapprovals and stuff like that than anything else. Then you'd build your form. We have a few, I know we're run over a few minutes, but I'm just going to show you quickly building a form. And then you'll hit publish and you'd be good to go. So you have to give your name a form, your form a name. So here'd be like homes under eight hundred or we ended up with bungalows. Bungalows in Toronto list. This again, no one else will see but you. More volume just means they just hit submit and it gets sent in. If you click higher intent. They have to slide their finger across the screen to confirm they're submitting their information. To be honest, we actually turn off this piece. We don't actually need a greeting. We just want to go straight into give us your information. You can add in a custom question or you could just come in here and add in phone number. And now it'll pre-fill this form in with their contact info. The only thing you have to know here is if you're doing a like lead into your CRM. You have to find out if they can accept it as full name or if they need you to break it into first name and last name. That's the only complication generally that can come out of this sometimes is. If you do it as a full name, what some CRMs will do is list their full name as the first name. Instead of actually breaking it up. So I believe like follow-up boss, for example, if anyone uses that prefers it to be a first and last name instead of just putting full name. But you'll know that pretty quick when you run an ad and how they're entered into your CRM. You do need a privacy policy on your website. If you don't have one, use your brokerages until you get one up. But Facebook won't let you run an ad without a privacy policy. And then the last thing I just want to know is someone opts into your ad, the worst thing that people do is they say, thanks, you're all set. Chat soon. This is the start of your relationship with this lead. Use it as an opportunity. So for example, this one list of bungalows for sale. The list of bungalows. Will be in your. In your inbox shortly. But remember, there's thinking of bungalows, they probably have to sell their current home. So what we do is we give them another offer. Do you need to sell your current home? To buy your next. Click below and we'll give you a free report on the value of your. And then here we have just changed this to say. Get. Get your free home value report. And now instead of just saying, thanks, we'll be in touch, we're offering them another piece of value that they can have. So whether you're doing it with landing pages or lead forms, having somewhere you can send them. Like we have one client, I believe our record was we went seven deaves with offers. Like they opted into one thing, we offered them a homie vow. They opt into that, then we offered them. But guide them how to prepare their home for sale. Then now for into something else and something else and something else. Then we at the end, we just sent them to client testimonials or a search for homes. But when someone opts in, this is just the start. Now you have to offer them more. When you do hit publish here, just you want to be really careful that you didn't screw anything up because once you hit publish, you can no longer edit this again. So if you found a mistake, you would actually have to come and create a brand new form. So the second you hit publish, it's permanent. So I'm not going to quit permanent right now. And then once you're done that. You would just click publish and your ad will go under review with Facebook and then go live. In terms of live, like it can take anywhere from like twenty minutes to technically up to like seventy-two hours. Normally within a couple of hours, it'll go live. If it's your first time running ads, it might take a couple more hours than usual. But normally it says like if you're at hour forty-eight and it hasn't done it yet. Sometimes you're better off just to delete it and redo it because it's probably just like caught in this weird thing. Now coming up to the election. And then coming up to like Black Friday, Cyber Monday, reviews will take longer. Technically, a person at Facebook reviews every single ad that ever gets placed. But that's a big job. So they actually have an algorithm that does the heavy lifting. So sometimes you'll see an ad that gets approved and then twenty-four hours later gets disapproved. What happened there is the algorithm approved it, then a person looked at it and shut it down. So sometimes stuff like that can happen. If you know you're right, you can appeal. If Facebook ever says like this is the final decision on the appeal, you can no longer appeal, you can still appeal. I've been told final decision three times in a row on the same ad and then they approved it on the fourth because I knew I was right. And sometimes it just has to be kicked up to the right person who can understand it. But once in a while that happens. So just because there's like a disapproved thing, it's not a huge deal. If any of you have like ads disapproved or you're having issues. Send me an email, reach out to me. I'm always happy just to help. Take a look. If you go to bookandrew.ca, you can actually buy, I have a option in there that you can just book a Facebook ad review call with me. So for free for fifteen. So for free for 15 minutes, we'll share a screen. We'll look at your ad account. And I'm happy to do it. I mean, please don't do that for every ad you ever run. But if you run into any problems here and there, I'm always happy to jump on. I keep those open as long as nobody's abusing that. But yeah, I'm always happy to answer questions. Or if you just want to email questions, Andrew at just sell homes dot com. Or reach out to me on Facebook or anything like that. I'm always happy to answer any questions that you guys have. So now we're kind of over time now. So if you guys have any questions, please let me know. I have it to sit around for a couple of minutes and answer anything. Otherwise, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Andrew. That was awesome. One of the things that I always forget, which I think for me is one of the most important things is what you're saying in that confirmation page or that thank you page. Once they've given you their information, you're right. Like that is, you know, the first step to creating a relationship with them and making that more personal rather than just thank you, I think is super, super important. And you know, we all know that that any online lead is the same quality. And you know this, we constantly hear people saying online leads are a terrible quality or this source is a terrible quality or that source is a terrible quality. But I think you agree with me when I say that all online leads are relatively the same. It's how A you qualify them before you get their information. And B, how you connect with them and follow up with them afterwards. So I think that was a really key point. Do you have anything further to add on that, Andrew? Like the follow up after you get the lead?
Just think of it like dating. That's the analogy we always make like if someone, you know, gives you their number, you don't just like walk away and don't talk to them and then maybe call them three days later, like keep talking to them. And it's like, if you meet someone at the bar and say, hi, you can't ask them to marry you right there on the spot. You might get lucky, maybe one person ever would. But you got to talk to them. You got to build a rapport. You got to work up to getting their number. You got to work up to getting them home. Like it, it's a process of building really, it's the exact same thing online. Like so many people do this. Like I made this mistake when I sold, someone would like reach out about a listing. This was when I didn't know what I was doing yet. And I'd like end up replying to like a 600 word email that at one point was explaining buyer agency in the email and going like super in depth on like the difference between a client and a customer. Of course they didn't respond to that. Now, if you reached out to me about a listing, I would just respond, great, thanks. Are you looking at it for yourself or as an investment? And that'd be the entire email that went back. I know in B C you guys have a couple of extra rules around disclosures. You can include that in there because you have to. But basically, the goal of your conversation is to set up the next reply. Your first reply to them is just your only goal is to get them to actually respond to you. So you don't have to get commitments. You don't have to get a phone call yet. You don't have to get anything yet. You just want to get them to actually engage with you somehow. Even if they're telling you where to stick it, we've had clients who have converted those leads after that's happened. We actually, you know, Ara, there's a really funny one. He was told to F off by a lead because he called him at, so the guy opted in at like nine twenty at night, nine twenty five, he called him. And he's like, what are you doing calling me this late? F you and got really upset. So he then just texted him and said, sorry, man, you just opted in. So I was just wanted to like provide good service. My apology. I guess, you know, sorry, I'm actually going through a divorce, so I'm just in a bad place right now. I actually do need to sell two homes and I gotta buy one. Do you mind coming over tomorrow and telling me what they're worth? Like sometimes people being rude, it's not about you. So basically until they actually be like, never contact me again, just keep following up.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. Ara always has really great stories of converting people that seem to be unconvertible. So just for everybody else that's still here, you know, Andrew is, as I've said, the founder and CEO of just sell homes dot com. So Andrew, if you want to drop your contact information there in the chat, like that link that you'd serve the URL that you'd said that that books a one-on-one call with you, the website where people can reach your team. You know, guys, this is what Andrew does for a living is he helps people with their social media marketing and advertising. So you know, if you went through the last hour and 15 minutes and you can feel your brain exploding, I know a couple of you reached out to me and is like, please tell me you're recording this because I need to watch this, you know, in 30 second pieces in order to keep up with what's happening. Andrew's team can provide a service where they sit down with you and they teach you from beginning to end, how to create your own ad. Or they can work with you in accordance with your budget and help by creating these ads for you so that you're getting the excellent cost per lead that just sell homes is famous for. And they can also help you with your follow up and your conversion as well, so that you're making sure that you're getting the most out of the budget that you're spending on Facebook. And of course, your Facebook Ads Manager also works for Instagram ads. Andrew, are you doing advertising and marketing on other social media platforms or primarily just Facebook Insta?
We have clients, we do stuff, but generally Facebook Instagram is the best result. So the only time we really move off is when they've kind of hit a plateau where, okay, now it makes sense to bring in some other ones. Most agents, though, they're just like, until you're spending like four or five grand a month on Facebook, you normally don't. Facebook and Instagram, you probably don't need another platform. Unless like specifically your audience is there, like if you're going after a very targeted group that's like big on TikTok, sure. Go. Can you link the Facebook ads to your Insta? Yeah, every time you build an ad on Facebook, you're building it for Instagram by default too, even if you don't have an Instagram. What is the recommended minimum budget for ad? The rough budget we use is $10 a day per 100,000 people in the audience. Generally, I don't like going below $5 a day and even $10 a day, we try to do as our minimum, just because it gives it now. Like if you do $5 a day, you can still get results. But the problem is it's often not enough budget to get testing in and see how it works. So like generally, I would say at least no matter what, try $10 a day. You can lower that to five once it kind of goes a bit. What is your opinion on TikTok? I think people make fun of it a lot. I think there actually is value there. I don't think it's the highest best use of my time or a lot of people's time. But like, for example, a lot of moms are on there because their kids are on there. So they originally joined to like see what they're doing. I know people who get hundreds of thousands of views on listings on there. But it's about what's the highest best use of your time and is your specific demographic on there? Like if you're going after like 30 to 40 year olds, maybe they're not on TikTok as much. But maybe the people who have like, you know, 10 year olds and 13 year olds, whatever age that parents are like, they might be on it more. But yeah, it's just talk to your clients, your preferred clients, see what, where they're spending the most of their time and then go there. So if it's
And I would suggest also add like finding Realtors on TikTok that are getting a lot of views and following what they're doing. Because the thing about TikTok is that you have to not be afraid to be on this side of the camera and not be afraid to really put yourself out there. I find a lot more than you do on Facebook and Instagram. So if you don't have that already deep rooted within, then TikTok isn't going to be a platform for you.
If you're not going to be comfortable on video, don't even bother. But like you can see like people get big on there doing stupid things. Like there's actually one right now who's blowing up. Who all he does is he looks at people at a paint store pouring paint into a can and tries to guess the color before the paint finally gets mixed. And he gets millions of people following him. It's actually wildly entertaining. It's the stupidest thing in the world, but he's super engaging. How length of a time to run an ad? Basically, we just run it till it stops working. There's no set time. If your ad stops working after two weeks, you stop it. We've had an ad we didn't make a change to for 17 months because it kept working. If an ad like, don't kill it if it's working still. So as long as it's working, you're getting results. How do you know if it's working? You're getting leads and deals. Something like if your goal is to get leads and you're not getting them, it's not working then. But even if you're getting leads and you can't close them, it's also not working. People overcomplicate it a lot, but if you're not getting business at the end of the day, like yeah, if you get leads, it takes time to convert them. But if you have a hundred leads and you haven't even, you know, set one appointment. I mean, at that point, the issue is probably on your end. But even if it's on your end, if you're not willing to work on the follow up part, then not much like, maybe ads aren't for you. Like we, that's why like for instance, like our company, we don't do contracts like long term. It's 30 days notice to cancel because some people just adds, it's never going to be a way for them to run their business. Like if you're 99% referral and you don't want to ever chase a lead, maybe the only time you want to run ads is like branding and awareness type of thing.
So backing up a bit, somebody said, like, how long do you run an ad before you can determine whether or not it's successful? And really you could find that out within the first couple of hours, couldn't you?
Depends on your budget. If your budget's five bucks a day, you're going to need four or five days. Like normally we say, if your goal is leads, you'll know by $50 spent if it's working or not. If you've spent 50 bucks and you have one lead, it didn't work. If you have two leads and let depending on the campaign, it didn't work. Normally as a rough rule of thumb, there's some changes there based on how you set up the ad, who you're targeting. If you're running an ad for a listing, you want to be in that one to $5 a lead range. If you're running a buyer campaign outside of listings, generally you want to be more in like the four to $12 range. Seller ads varies even more area to area, five to $20 a lead range. Again, it varies a lot area. Like if you know GTA, like Burlington to Oakville, I can get a $4 seller lead sometimes in Burlington and on the same campaign in Oakville, we'll get $40 a lead. Like it, it's very regional kind of how those changes happen. So it's just testing, but generally if you spent $50 and you don't have leads, then yeah, you just, you donated to Zuckerberg. But you learned what didn't work. So now you can try something else.
And then just to back up a little bit, there was one question that we missed from Joe T. What's your opinion on LinkedIn?
So was like organically, there's some value there. But generally, most agents don't have the right like connections on there to make it worth it. Because the majority of what people happen over the last 10 years of LinkedIn is you just added people you knew, which often is like other agents and stuff. You hit accept. You didn't really care about who you connected with. Everyone just says yes to everybody. It's not like, so you can get great reach on your organic comment, content. But normally you don't have the right people that that reach matters. In terms of an paid ad perspective, it's nowhere near the levels you get from a Facebook and Instagram. So unless you're specifically going after a very specific group of people who would only spend their time there. We haven't found it's worth it. Like they just launched stories and I could not care less about any feature ever released on a platform.
Yeah. Okay. Copycat, right? Like it's, that's exactly what it is. You know, where I think the value of LinkedIn is, is in updating it twice a year and focusing on the successes that you've had in your career and the successes that you've had in your volunteer world and in your recreational world. What sets you apart and what make, what makes you unique? And something that rang true to me that I heard recently was that all of these social media platforms, YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, LinkedIn, they're all search engines really. And as they all want to come up, you know, first in the Google results. So if somebody is going to be Googling you, Sandra Kirkland Realtor, and they want to learn a little bit more about you, your LinkedIn profile is going to pop up even if you haven't looked at it in five years. So use it as an online CV, an online resume, as far as I'm concerned. Just make sure you're updating it once or twice, you know, your sales awards that you got this year, put it up on your LinkedIn. Make sure people know that you're there and it's a great way of, of, you know, showing, I think, your professional prowess, in my opinion.
The Facebook ads versus Google ads. So you'll get a lower cost per lead on Facebook, slightly higher quality on Google. Basically, the difference is you're going onto Google to search for something specific. So you're like, I want homes for sale in Toronto, homes for sale in Vancouver. Your ad shows up, they're already looking for homes. Facebook, you're interrupting whatever they were doing to show them your offer. So it's less likely they're as high intent as someone on Google, but you pay a lot more for Google ads. In most areas, some areas you don't pay as much. The other thing is like Facebook with especially like lead ads, your website doesn't have to be that good to convert traffic. So many agent websites are so bad at converting traffic that you're wasting money when you run Google ads. That's just, but because like there's a couple of different people, but most people like design ads or design websites are like website or the graphic designers who figured out how to turn it into a website. They're not marketers. They're not lead gen people. So like if all the newer LP sphere though, like that one's built by people who like understand leads. So that one, if you have Google ads, you can run it. You're doing Google ads for leads, you do need force registration on it. You won't really get anything. So force registration, there's no right or wrong there. A lot of people find it a pain in the butt, but you get a bunch of leads and it's predictable. So that's really up to you if you want that as part of your business or not.
I saw that there was somebody that asked in the chat about halfway through your session, if you would maybe come back and do a session that is specifically on A B testing. And Andrew, you and I have talked at length about delivering some detailed courses, some advanced tips and tricks. Do you think that doing a short, maybe 20 minute session on A B testing and how to tell if your ad is working and what to tweak if it's not working would be a good thing that we could offer?
Yeah. And what even might work there's if there's someone specific, like we can even just share their screen and we can dissect someone's ad live and go through that.
Yeah, that's a really good idea too. And you and I have also discussed the capabilities of sending Facebook ad or leads rather to directly to KV Core. And I think that that does need Zapier in order to function.
That's what the clients of ours who use KV Core or ROP Sphere, we send them through Zapier right now. I don't know if there's a direct connection, but we use Zapier for so much, it's easier for our workflow just to keep it there.
I think the only direct connection that we have with R L P sphere is if you are using the property boost function within R L P sphere. But I think that that gives you a lot less capability and functionality in terms of really doing detailed Facebook ads, the way that we were just discussing today. Andrew, you and I have been talking for months about drilling a little bit deeper into that. And maybe we should do that in the coming weeks and see if we can do also a separate session on on Facebook ads and R O P sphere.
Sure. I saw one about Google ads. I can, but I'll be honest, half the time I go to Danny Wood for Google ads. Like we run Google ads for clients as well. But I mean, for training on Google ads, Danny is, has more experience with that. So I would say, learn from Danny Wood for Google ads. If you want it and do it, I can do it. But I prefer Danny Wood for Google ads.
Okay, everybody, don't ask. I'll reach out to Dan Wood this afternoon and we'll get him set up for a session as soon as we can.
A lot of what I learned that works on Google, I actually learned from Danny doing sessions together. Guys are just straight to the source.
Perfect. I'm going to email him right now and set up a session with him to do the Google ads for the brokerage. Okay, is that it? Any other questions coming through? Lots of thank yous and that certainly echoes my appreciation, Andrew, for you taking time out of your busy days to join us. And I'm looking forward to having you back and having you be a staple within our brokerage for these guys moving forwards. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to go to Andrew directly. If you have any feedback, positive or negative, happy to see it in the chat. Thank you. Please feel free to send me any of your questions and feedback personally at s Kirkland at RoyalPage.ca. Thanks to everybody for joining us this afternoon. That was wonderful and we'll see you guys on the next one. We are running just in the final stages of booking a session with Terion for the end of October and we are hoping to have a keynote speaker come in monthly now and moving forward into the future. So our next session, the end of October will be Terion. I think we're going to do some financial planning at the end of November and we'll see if we can book Danny Wood for December. And if anybody has any suggestions or things that you need, send them my way and we'll get it booked. Thanks to everybody for joining us. Thank you all for it. It was really nice to see you. Thanks for turning your camera on, my friend. All right, everybody. Thank you. Have a wonderful and productive afternoon. We'll see you guys again.